Six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome. We will begin with a thought from our police chief in observance with National Peace Officers Memorial Day, followed by a pledge led by Jordan.
Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity. It's become a bit of a tradition for me to speak to the council during the meeting that is closest to National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is observed each year on May 15th. Again, thank you for this honor. This year, the names of 472 officers who died in the line of duty in 2021 will be added to the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. They will take their place next to the names of over 22,000 officers already memorialized. In previous years, I've tried to find a law enforcement related thought to share with this audience. This year is going to be just a little bit different. I'm proud to be a police officer, but I realize that not all find comfort in the presence of a police officer. I'm grateful that I was called to this profession, but I understand the apprehension the next generation has about answering that call. I believe in the nobility of law enforcement, but I acknowledge that many have not been treated in a noble fashion. Quite frankly, after two years of the pandemic wars, riots, misconduct, hyper tribalism, and what seems to be like a general lack of empathy in the world, I, like many others, I think must say that my heart is tired. So tonight, I ask that you simply join me in a short prayer for peace. Lord, we come before you tonight to ask for peace. Peace in our country, peace in our homes, peace in our hearts, and peace on earth. We ask you for the vision to see each other as brothers and sisters. We ask you for the patience to understand different opinions, and we ask you for the strength to forgive each other. I ask for your guidance, Lord, in my decisions and actions that impact this department and this wonderful community. I ask that you watch over the members of Syracuse Police Department. See us through our tour and help us be your peacemaker and return us home safely at the end of our shift. Amen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Will the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Beginning the agenda, I would like to open to public comment. Cassie, we have one public comment that came via email. I would ask that we begin with that.
Yes, this email was sent by Robert Kirk. He says, "Watching last week's council planning session, I was very pleased at the thoroughness and smart discussions, especially about the hotel issue and development. Our views and concerns as Syracuse citizens are being well represented, thanks to all. This is so refreshing at this time where our large units of government, state and federal, are so unresponsive to common citizens' concerns. Praise for Mayor Dave Mon's most recent column in the Syracuse Connection Newsletter, good expression of how government should work. Thanks, I trust all concerned citizens will be active in providing desired feedback. P.S. Despite many frustrating minutes and trips to multiple pages on the city website, I could not find email for input to be read at city council meetings." Then he just provides his name and address.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to public comment from the floor. Again, it's a three-minute maximum. If you'd like to come forward, you need to state your name and address.
Kurt Williams, and my address is 2428 West 2700 South. I'm concerned of the development that has started just east of me. They've been hauling dirt in for a week. And from what I understand, and I'm just looking for some clarification, I know you can't answer that now, is why no fencing has been provided by developers. This morning at nine o'clock, I got a phone call with two horses out because the dump truck hit fence. My fence was tore down, and then I had horses out on 2700 South. This is just pretty frustrating that we can start projects like this. I'm not even notified, nothing said to, and then the next thing I know, I've got livestock out. So my concern is, is what we're going to do in the future, from what I understand, I guess fencing has been taken out and developers don't have to provide fencing. I have spoke with the developer, and he said that there's no future plans for that to happen. So that's my concern.
Okay, we are not able to address new conversation comes up, so I hope you understand. But I will say that it is on the agenda tonight to talk about the fencing issue, so that will be addressed tonight.
Thank you.
Any others? Mr. Crowton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to address a few items that are on tonight's, or provide some comments.
You state your name and address.
Oh, yes, that's correct. Shane Crowton, address 2353 South, 3585 West. So to start, I just wanted to make, I don't know if we have this ordinance in the city of Syracuse, but I wanted to recommend that possibly we look at the use of dark sky lighting for streetlights and as a standard for future developments. I think it would really help the area maintain its, you know, being able to see the stars in the sky. As far as item number six, the update to the water rate schedule, to me, that appears to be a good update, and I support that. Item 14, I think it might be a good idea to move the southern boundary north on the west side of that development, next to the park, so it's in line with other commercial properties that are to the west. I think that might allow for the possibility of a cross-access agreement and maybe better fire access for fire department. Item 15, in relation to the landscaping, I would recommend approving that as written, especially keeping the requirement for vegetation in front yards. I think that's very important. I've worked with a nearby city as code enforcement, and that turns into a bad situation where people think it's a parking lot because it's gravel. So vegetation's good there. Item 16, the overall, it's a good design. I don't know if it's the best place for apartments, especially the amount with the two developments going in there. My biggest concern for that development with the townhomes is what's the garage size going to be, and are they going to have driveways? This is another thing that I've seen with a nearby city as I've worked in code enforcement and building inspection that after the fact, after these were built, they found out that they didn't have enough parking, and so people started parking on streets. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, to me, this is a bad idea to put the hotel there. I think it's going to ruin the development opportunities for that area, especially with it being a flag lot and right in the center of what could be a nice commercial development. I think we should hold off on something like that. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others for public comment?
Hi, I'm Larry Mills. I live down on 4,000 West and 2772 South. I'm here about the fence with the subdivisions. A few years ago, I guess it got taken out of the ordinance that subdivision didn't have to put up a chain link fence between us and agriculture, them and agriculture. But I'm going to tell you something. I've watched it over the years, and where the fence was up, chain link fence up, I do not have no problem with kids. But these last subdivisions that one of the Barlow's service mortgage done, where there's no chain link fence, nothing but problems with kids. And in the winter, we bring all of our cattle home off the mountains, put them in them pastures. I rent the pasture Floyd Wilcox's. We put our bulls in there, and there's going to be a day when a kid gets out there, if you don't require this fence to go up, and them bulls are going to make mincemeat out of a child. And let me tell you something, I'm not going to be responsible for it because I, it was in the ordinance, and everywhere, I rent Stan Hamblin's place, chain link fence all around the subdivisions. We do not have no problem with kids. But up there, where you didn't require it, we have problems with kids. And I've worked 27 years for a city, so I understand what goes on. And let me tell you, it needs to be required. Now, I'm saying, you know, if you've got a piece of property that's going to be, that you guys is okay, and developed, and the one next to it is in agriculture and has command for, to start the process, then I think it's stupid to put the fence up. But if it's not gonna, if there's no sign of development, I honestly think that fence needs to be there to protect the kids. Bob wire fence, kids will crawl through it. They'll kick their ball through it, they'll go after it. And I'm just, I'm just telling you, it's just not a good deal not to have that chain link fence up there. And if they, if the bob wire fence is there, and a homeowner builds and takes down that bob wire fence and puts up a white vinyl fence, it ain't going to last. I can take you down to my house, and I can show you where many gals has went through that vinyl fence. They rub against it and pop it. So I'm just asking you guys to look at it in a serious way to protect the people and to protect agriculture from the people. Darren Floyd Wilcox's, I was irrigating one night, and I went up there 11 o'clock at night to change the water. I had a bunch of kids out there in the water, playing in the water. Had their motorbikes out there, and I'm not, you know, if I could, if I was younger and could run faster, you'd been minus some kids because you just can't, it's hard enough to make a living with, you know, the way it is today, and have to deal with kids is not the best of thing.
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes is up.
Okay.
It'll be on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Hi, Chris Young on 2233 South 550 West. I had a question. I didn't see on the agenda. I don't know if it's on, but we're going to participate in the Weaver Basin Flip the Strip because we've been trying to get on the list to do that, and you know, I'm sure you're aware of how that's going. It's so far behind. So is that on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, that's on the agenda tonight.
It is.
It's on the agenda as item 15, that we will make adjustments that we pre-approved with Weaver Basin that would make us eligible to be a participant in Flip the Strip. We've been working on this for a month.
Okay, so it is in the works. That's what I want to know because I'd definitely like to participate, so.
Should be finished tonight.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
I don't know. I can't speak to how fast they will accept it, but we have, we worked out in advance that these changes would make it us an approved city.
Okay, wonderful.
That's the intent of this item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. We have four sets of minutes for March 22nd work session, March 22nd special business meeting, April 12th regular business meeting, and April 12th work session. Do I have any comments or details on those?
Motion to approve the minutes. Second?
I have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number four, request to be on the agenda introduction of our full-time court clerk. Cassie?
Mayor and council, this is Michelle Wood. It's my pleasure to introduce her to you. She was recently, well, she was hired last year as a part-time court clerk in the Justice Court, and we converted her position to full-time. This year, we realized how amazing she was and wanted to make sure that we didn't lose her, and so we made that decision. I just want to give you a little bit of information on Michelle. She's a Woods Cross resident. She served as a youth council advisor there for five years, where she oversaw 30 youth and coordinated seven major events every single year. She's a certified RAD instructor, which is women's self-defense and rape aggression defense, which is amazing, and she's offered to share those skills with Syracuse employees as well. She has three grown daughters. She just had a great professional background, just experience in all different kinds of fields. And that's just what made her such an attractive candidate for the job. Her talents include organization, event coordination, learning quickly, which I can attest to, sociability and getting things done. I'm just so happy that she is in our department and just wanted to introduce her to you. So thanks for giving us time on the agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thanks.
Item number five is common consent items. We have previously discussed these in a work session and come to unanimous agreement, at least for the time, unless somebody would like to pull one of these off. The proposed ordinance number 2022-6, amending standards for fire turnarounds, and proposed ordinance 22-29, updating Syracuse City employment recruitment and retention policy.
Twenty-two nineteen.
What did I say? Anyway, 2219 is the second one.
So on, I just had one comment on the compensation or the retention policy. There was just one blank line that was in there, and it was like item 2C, 2A, I, if that means anything to you. Yeah, you got to follow down to two, and then C, 2, A, I.
Next page.
Is that just the extra?
Oh, right there. Yeah, it's on page four.
Yeah, that just is a deleted. Yeah, it just needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, I just want to make sure there's nothing missing there.
Nope.
And I'm going to consider that a grammatical fix, just for text. So other than that, are there any other issues with that? Okay, I'll take a motion.
A move that we approve, the two ordinances, 2022-06 and Resolution 2219.
A second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a public hearing, proposed resolution R22-20, updating and amending the Syracuse City Consolidated Fee Schedule by making adjustments to the water restructure rate, recreation program fees, garbage container fees. Okay, Steve, if you want to preface this for us?
Sure. I'll start with the easy ones first. The garbage container fees, we've noticed over the last year with COVID and with supply chain issues, the resin in the cans has caused about a 50% increase in garbage costs, garbage can costs. So that's actually a fee to the new home development as they come in and not to existing residents. Next one, with the recreation changes, there's a whole laundry list of changes, and Crest has gone over this in her deep dive about the recommended changes to the programs. I'm not going to go through each individually, but if you have questions, we'll answer those for you. And the last one we talked a lot about is the water rates schedule structure. And since the last meeting, we talked about, we did, we talked about residential, and that's in the proposed fee schedule. When we left last meeting about commercial rates, council wanted to see what the tier would look like with 5,000 gallon increments. So I ran those numbers, and basically was shooting for about a $70,000 increase to get to our total of 270, if we were to go over our allotment. And that's what I put in the proposed fee schedule tonight, and you can see they're modest increases of about 50 cents per tier. This is only an example, so if the council wanted to do something different with it, I just thought I'd give you a good starting point on that discussion. So those are the, those are the changes as requested.
Okay, respectfully to the motion of, we were unresolved with business rates. I'd like to open that up for discussion before we have public hearings, so that would give the public a chance to comment on our landing spot. Anybody want to start with that on whether you like where we're at?
It seemed very modest.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it, to me, adding the extra levels adds that incentive as you go to the reverse incentive, I guess, so to speak. And so to me, it captures a little bit more granularity. I think it makes sense.
And I actually laid out very well, especially where it so closely follows the commercial or the residential rates. It's easy to understand that it's not too different. There is two different strategies, but they at least aren't aligned with each other. So I thought they did a good job, and I'd like to try.
I like the, I like the tiered effect because that way they've, they've got easily defined tiers that they can make a business decision. If it's too expensive, we need to, we need to find a way to use less and/or, you know, cost-saving methods to, you know, use less water. So I like the tiered method.
Yeah, there seems to be more carrot and less stick.
Yeah, and so I will just state to the public, the purpose of our revising the schedule is twofold. Number one, we want to provide an incentive for people to use less water, meaning you will be able to lower your rates if you conserve because that is a problem that we have. And the second part of that, the reason that this has to be addressed is we were notified by our water providers that if we use the same amount of water, we would have a new charge. And these rate adjustments reflect our ability to recoup that if we use that much water. The hope is that the city will collectively reduce their water use so that we will not incur those additional charges, and we hope that we've provided the means for that to happen. Now, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If there's any public that want to comment on this before it goes to a vote for the council. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Council, if you have further discussion or I'm ready for a motion.
Hey, I'm just excited to see a pickleball league and a dodgeball league.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed resolution R22-20, updating and amending the Syracuse City Consolidation Fee Schedule.
Thank you.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is also a public hearing, proposed resolution R22-21, adjusting the Syracuse City budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th. Steve, tell us a little bit about where we are in the adjustments. This does happen every year where we have things that need to carry over into a future year, things that need to be adjusted because of the end of year, things just don't quite work out. So go ahead.
All right, yeah, so as the mayor mentioned, this is just a budget opening to correct some of our expense and revenue line items just to more accurately reflect what's going on. The big ones are, in some of our revenues, sales tax, franchise tax, billing fees and plan fees, approximately $1.5 million above revenue expectations. Also, in the expense line item categories, there's a $51,000 budget for the COVID-related expenses that we had not previously budgeted for. Some other notable adjustments, impact fee revenues also were increased as far as budget expectations with the development that's been happening. We added the BMX course project, the Fremont Park parking lot expansion. We fixed some depreciation expense line items. And you can see down through there, there's a few other things in here. Also, in this budget opening, we talked about the recruitment retention plan back in January. We made some adjustments, and those adjustments are reflected in this budget opening as well. There are several things in here. I'm not going to go over unless you guys have questions on.
Okay. Council, before we open it up to public hearing, are there any items in here that you had questioned or wanted to adjust before we go into that?
So I'm not, I'm not sure if this would be the time to do that. With our Juvenile Justice Court, we have a situation that our clerk that has been there 10 years, she's on volunteer. She's trying to train a replacement. She herself has been involved in over 500 cases in the last several years on complete volunteer basis. She's not really up for doing it on volunteer basis anymore. It's just become too much, and she can't find a replacement. So basically, we need to look at maybe making it a part-time. She would consider staying for a part-time position. If not, our Juvenile Justice Services may kind of all part permanent, and that would cause the traffic to go back to our court system. And be seen there, and so something to look at.
I'm going to suggest this is probably better put in next year's budget because I don't know that we're going to make an adjustment between now and
Yeah, but it's
the end of this season.
That's worth looking at.
It is worth looking at. You're correct.
It's like we might end up spending more money.
Okay, but that would not be a part of this budget opening. Any others? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. If anyone has a public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And I'm ready for a motion unless you have other items you want to discuss.
A move. We approve Resolution R22-21.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight is also a public hearing, allowing for public input regarding the issuance and sale of not more than 8,500,000 aggregate principal amount in secondary water irrigation revenue bonds. This has to do with our project that in conjunction with the highway, we are making a trade, and we will be making certain improvements to the water, secondary water system that will help set us up for the growth of the city and also helps us work in conjunction with UDOT for their needs as well. It's an opportunity for us to take advantage and get some free service out of this. So Steve, I'll let you go ahead and talk about just the process of getting a bond and the issuance.
Yeah, we talked in previous meetings, we've gone through the process of parameters resolution to go out to bid to get the most cost-effective rate. You can see there are five bidders on the list. I want to commend the council for taking quick action. As many of you have heard, the Fed's actually raised interest rates a half percentage point just this last Wednesday. So I think us moving quickly and locking in that rate of just over 3% was a great move. From here, after the comments, if there are any, the bond is scheduled to close next Tuesday on May 17th.
Discussion.
We need water. We need to be smart about it, and so anything we can do to conserve, well, to plan for the future and try and not kick it down the road, I think this is a good move. And the fact that we could do it for cheaper than we would have been able to otherwise, I think, again, is the wisest decision, so.
I'm going to open it to a public hearing if anyone wants to comment on this item before we go any further. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, any further discussion or we're ready for a motion?
There's actually no action required on this item. We just need to have the record reflect that we opened the public hearing and allowed for public input.
Okay, then we're done. So we have held our public hearing. Item number nine, except fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative budget set for public hearing June 14, 20, or 2022, and consider adoption of the operating budget. I think this is where we probably need to reinsert Jennifer's item of the I think this is where we probably need to reinsert Jennifer's item of the suggestion of adding to the budget funding for a specific position. I'll open that up for discussion. We, we've heard the proposal by Jennifer.
Ideally, while, while I agree, my daughter actually is, uh, is in the youth court. She's one of the people that gets to be up there and help teach some of these kids, uh, you know, perhaps better things to do. And it's a great program. Um, what I would like to do is rather than have, um, with respect, I, I, I actually like to see the, the department head, uh, just chime in on this. I don't want to make a decision without talking to the staff in that area.
Yeah, and so there's a couple of ways we can do this. We can actually, uh, you can put it in the budget somewhere for the tentative budget now. Um, you could, you could pass what's in the, what's in the packet now as the tentative budget and still amend it later. And we could discuss this at the May work session. Depending on the, the situation and, and the cost and everything, um, I would like to have the opportunity to propose to put it under a department head. Currently, youth court really isn't. But if we did, I would, um, I would like to have some time to speak with the department head and and have a presentation for you.
So I guess what I'd prefer to do at this point is, again, this budget will be going through three more meetings.
Yes, before it's enacted.
Before it's actually enacted. Uh, I'm okay with moving forward with what we have here. I would like to get the details and let's, uh, see if this is something we can look at because it is a good program and I agree. Um, that it's worth continuing. So.
So I'm going to suggest that, uh, because we don't have all of the documentation for this meeting. I'm willing to put it on the May work session as an item for discussion.
Yep.
If you want to go forward with this without amending the budget. I'm getting head nods from everyone, so we will make this a May work session item for discussion. And we'll move forward with this as written in the packet.
Is there a motion here?
So I'm.
I had another comment. Another, another item I just wanted to bring up. So I was just looking through the packet and Jordan, could you clarify what the? What's, what's the Jordan item?
I was wondering, I actually called Preston, talked about this. So if you'll recall, a few months back, um, I had requested that we put in uh, pictures around the track upstairs in their recreation center.
Okay.
So, uh, and Dave said, no, we don't want glass up there. And so Cresta went out and looked and, uh, looked at some options for some wrapped canvas. So, so, so she, she, she put in an MTE value. Um, but a- as we went up there, as you go around the track, I, I, I don't know if you guys are, uh, the old Salt Lake Airport, uh, had these beautiful pictures of Utah and things like that. And I really loved going through the airport. The new airport doesn't have those, a little bitter about that. Um, but what I thought is in our Syracuse track, it is a great track we have over at the recreation center. But it could be greater. And, and what I would like to see us do is we have a, a lot of truly amazing historical photos of Syracuse. Um, what I would like to do is take some, uh, funds and just put some of those historical Syracuse pictures up around that track. So as you're going through, maybe you can learn a little bit of history as well and and see some of the beautiful pictures of Syracuse.
The museum has some amazing photos we can get blown up on a canvas.
Well, absolutely. Well, that's what I was thinking, actually.
So the only thought is on, on the airport, you know, you have like wait for a flight and you sit there and you wait for hours and you hope you get on the next flight. On the track, you're kind of moving and you're not supposed to stop.
Well, well, the whole, we, we, we don't want to put detailed descriptions that are.
Are there any studies that would show how this would increase time? Decrease people's running time?
So, so you guys, take it out if you like.
I think the standard seems a little.
But I, I do think this would be a good addition to our community center to put, to get some of this art up there and photos. So that, that's why I put it on there. Um, like I say, it's, it's up to each of you to decide if it's worth your.
I would vote against it for 1,500 bucks, but you know.
I'm just going to weigh in. I, you know, I'm a big proponent of art in places. I just think that there's probably better places that would get more vision if we were to increase the, uh, art in public spaces. That's probably the lower on my list of, of urgency of places we need to beautify.
Hey, I, I know that as I'm up there, I, I would love to see some of this. So.
Arrange an art competition to be hung in around the track.
I think that's a great idea.
And let the people of Syracuse City provide you some.
Okay, so for the purpose of going forward.
So I guess, what, what are your thoughts?
Do we have, people want this in or out? It can always come back.
I would love to see it later. Uh, yeah.
I, I don't see a huge benefit, so it's probably not as simple as I would.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to move forward without this in the current.
I feel like that's a mistake, just so you know.
That's fine. Noted. Noted on the agenda, Jordan thinks this one is, should be on the immediate. Okay. So going forward with that is a delayed urgency.
Fair.
Um, do I have a motion to consider adoption of an operating budget?
I so move, we consider adoption of the operating budget.
Minus Jordan's item.
Minus Jordan's weird item.
I think what you meant to say is awesome item. I will second, or, uh, I'll second as she stated it.
Okay. Motion.
Now I can't help.
Mayor.
All in favor?
Mayor, real quick, can you just make sure the motion language is to accept the tentative budget? And then that we're setting the public hearing for June 14th for adoption of the operating budget.
Okay, say it again. Okay, accept fiscal year 2022 to 2023 tentative budget and set public hearing, or is that the one we're reading right?
Yes.
At the public hearing for June 14th, 2022 to consider adoption of operating budget. Without Jordan's weird.
I, Jordan's item.
Without the artwork and the, the canvas and the.
For future discussion. All right. Stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Item number 10, authorization of administration to award contract for secondary water reservoir project phase one. And we just talked a little bit about this, so we don't want to go too far into depth. This is the project that we would be using the funds for in item number eight.
Thank you, mayor. So we sent bids out, we received them last Wednesday. We got three bids from, all from very qualified bidders. Uh, the low bid came in, uh, from Brinkerhoff Excavating at 3.3 million dollars. Now that's out of the total budget of 13 million. This is just the first phase of, of the project. We felt it necessary to start with the first phase, be phased uh, as soon as we could because materials have, uh, about a three-month delay. So if we can get started with, uh, the bid, then we could probably begin in about, uh, three months from now to really get going. Uh, this is primarily along Bluff Road, uh, between Antelope and 2700 South. So it'll be piping. And another really good part of this completes, um, Councilmember Savage's vision of improving pedestrian access to the trail. So we are, uh, planning on putting some trail crossings in across Bluff Road. Reason we waited this long was, was, uh, because once West Davis corridor is in place, that should take a lot of the burden of the regional traffic that currently uses Bluff Road off of Bluff Road. So the traffic volumes should decrease, which will allow it. Uh, it would be easier for pedestrian cross, or safer for pedestrian crossings across Bluff Road once traffic volumes decrease. So that was why the delay. But it's been several years. How many years, Jordan? Have you been on?
Five.
It's been a lot of years, but this completes it, but all, all of this kind of happens in time. So.
Right.
There you go.
All right. Any further discussion? This is just an authorization of the contract we've had up. I'll take a motion.
Move that we authorize administration to award the contract to Brinkerhoff Excavating in secondary pond.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, authorize administration to award contract for the park maintenance facility project.
Okay, you guys, we discussed this in the work session. And I told you that I'd go back and we'd ask. So what they came back with today is we could cut out the covered parking and then the extra storage for a wonderful value of 109,000 dollars. So that's all that they could cut off, that they said it would cut off. So the decision will be to cut off that 109,000 dollars or to keep it. But the lowest bid was 4,464,000 dollars for the park maintenance facility.
I'm just going to chime in at the beginning of this and say that considering the way construction costs are going, we might as well keep the parking in. And there's never enough storage to begin with. So I don't see us. We might as well get the bang for the buck now because it'll cost us at least that much for either part of this if we wait a couple of years.
Yeah.
I think that's sort of like what we were talking about at the work session, that it's gone up so much since this project came up. Now that the price is locked in, it's only going to get.
It's not a significant enough.
If we were saving a million dollars, I think we'd.
Well, you did just save 1,500. So that can go towards us.
You're on the list.
I know, Jordan. I'm always.
We will put that towards this project.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to authorize the contract?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are moving right along. This is awesome.
One thing on that, one of it was, I noticed in the packet, it discussed about, um, possible funding sources.
Yes.
For the additional, do we need to make a determination on that as well?
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
We can work, that would be budget juggling and not just, this is just going forward with the contract.
Okay. Steve nods his head, so it kind of went like.
Convenient.
All right. Item number 12, authorize administration to award contract for Jensen Park Shoreline Project.
This is another project we've been talking about for about a year. We put it off and put it off. We've got the bid. Um, lowest bid was 65,295. Um, the, uh, tear works was 101 82. So we're recommending that we award the bid to Earthworks Landscaping Services. We do have the bid budget of 100,000 dollars, which will include the dock. And then Chad also got a $10,000 grant to help go towards this. So.
Can you describe what else is associated with this? Is it just the dock?
It's the landscaping. It's all the landscaping that'll be along, along that. And then the floating dock is not part of this. It will come back when we get that design and everything.
There'll be a floating dock and then this is replacing grass.
Yeah, we're going to have, it's going to be zero scape. Everything's going to be drought resistant. Is that tolerant? Drought tolerant? And rocks, it's going to, it's going to look really nice. And then we'll have a.
A lot of this has to do with shoring up the shorelines.
That's what the big rocks were for. That's already done. This is just the landscaping behind, so we don't have a bunch of weeds.
Erosion.
And then, and erosion.
Can I get a copy of those plans just because?
Sure.
Okay, so can we get a motion?
I like that. I gotta say, I like that we're using a circus company, though.
Yes.
Great that we're supporting our own businesses.
Agreed. Can I get a motion?
I, I move that we award the shoreline, uh, contract to Earthworks.
A second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 13, proposed ordinance 2022 dash 07, amended Syracuse City Code section 10 dash 30 dot 82 related to buffer yards and new development.
So I just wanted to, just for a second, point out, and this is something that it literally just registered my, when I was looking through this again. Out of all the existing land use categories on here that are adjacent to single-family residents, it's only the agriculture and roads that aren't protected by fencing.
Sorry, that was me.
We know.
Stop it.
Mr. Steele.
Sorry, I don't know why I did that.
If you need attention, find another way. Okay, so go ahead.
So one of the questions was raised in our work session, whose responsibility is?
Yes.
Correct. So if it's for commercial, light commercial, industrial, attached residential, all of those, it's required the builders and developers to put a fence line in. It's agriculture does not have that afforded.
Okay.
And it's the only one that does. And it's.
Okay, noted. Good point. Any other points or that want to, you want to go over? We've discussed this one quite a bit, so it looks like, um, the proposal, unless there's an alternate proposal, would be to add back in the responsibility of fence.
Yeah, this, this ordinance amendment, there are three things that we've been looking at. Adding a buffer requirement between single-family and agriculture, which would be chain link. And then requiring attached residential next to agriculture to have a wall.
I'm going to unplug it. Why it's doing that.
Sorry.
Okay.
And then, and then the third category is attached residential next to single-family, which would also be a wall. And all of these would be, the cost would be borne by the developer that comes in next to them.
Okay.
So those are the three decision points that we need tonight.
So we have, uh, you know, is it even on, all to be in, or you have, so they want to make a motion that we only do part of this?
So I guess my question is, is it overly onerous to put a precast concrete next to commercial just because those are really expensive? And while I get it's, it's a development and we, but what we, what you'll end up doing is you'll be trading density for a wall.
That's excessive, precast.
I agree.
Excessive, I think.
Which cat are you talking about? Cause that wasn't even on one of the options.
Uh, attached residential next to agriculture is listed as D. And D is six foot precast concrete privacy.
Sorry, I thought you said commercial. Maybe I missed it, missed.
Maybe I said, maybe I misspoke. But I, I don't want to. I, I think that's overly restrictive.
So, so what hap, because it, yeah, if we do something like that and then that, that neighboring agriculture becomes another.
Residential.
And we've all, we, we've got all these segmented.
You got precasted walls.
That's something in this, what they stated, and I'm just going to say how I read this. I feel like the planning commission would make the recommendation with a little presumption that it's going to be right here where it says, um, they finally concerning concrete fences between agriculture and new development, which but it says, uh, agriculture.
Step away.
So, so.
Everybody's stepping in now.
So I actually came into this meeting ready to just leave it as is. But I have to admit, um, as Mr. Mills was talking, I kind of was thinking more and more about this. And I think there is a, a risk here. And so first of all, thank you guys. Public comment does matter. I appreciate you guys coming in and talking. And, and so that kind of opened my eyes to a few of these things. What I don't want to have happen is just a bunch of chain link going up all over the, the city either because chain link tends to, it lasts forever, which is great, but the problem is it lasts forever.
And it degrades.
And it, and it doesn't look the same on day forty as it does on day one.
So. I would bring this back to the point that when we first brought this, uh, section of code forward, it was only with the intention of discussing what was between residential and agriculture. So we are already going way into more than we ever.
So to be clear, all of these are residential next to. So, so first of all, attached residential versus single residential, I'm leaving that as is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, the only place that I'm considering tonight would be the two that are adjacent to agriculture.
Single family.
That are both listed as none. Single family and attached next to agriculture. Right now they are listed as none. And I think that there we do have a problem here.
So it sounds like that would be a good motion.
Except, so.
But the problem is we're not sure what.
I'm not sure if I want chain link around all of these.
But the thing is, is fair, and I'm, we can't expect the developers to overpay. It's, we just got to make sure the kids are safe. Cause honestly, that's what it comes down to is keeping these little kids safe. They're not going to climb. They're not going to climb the chain link. They don't, I've never had a kid climb a chain link fence.
To be clear, I've climbed many a chain link because I had a kid with iron field behind my house. Yes.
Like kids are an issue then, right?
Does the chain link solve the problem of the?
Yeah.
I, I think the chain link provides. But, but I think the deterrent here is mo- most teenagers know, I hope, not to go up and start walking behind a horse and doing, but, but a toddler doesn't. I, I said most. I, I do agree that the liability should not be on the farmers. If people, if they climb a fence to get into something.
But I think if our ordinance has any kind of fence, that takes the liability off its part.
Agreed.
So I think that's what we want to do is make sure that the liability doesn't rest on the previous person who was there first.
Right. So I guess I, I will make a motion then. So I actually move that we add chain link. For anytime we have single family or attached residential next to agriculture, we move those to H and leave the rest as is.
A second.
Hey, you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
So what is, I, I guess I'm still, I don't know, I'm still concerned about the aesthetics of all of chain link all over the place and what happens to the future when, when those cha- when those.
It's already there.
Change.
This was just taken out not very long ago. I don't.
Did we, we already had chain link?
Yeah.
Why was it, so why are we, why are we going back and forth? Is it removed?
So.
It was removed a couple of years ago.
Yeah, the history of this is that we tend to, when we make a revision, seems like people start throwing out, hey, and while you're in this section, you should make this other change. And I don't think this is one that was fully considered or vetted. I think this was somebody said, hey, we really need to do this.
And this is more than a couple of years ago. This is before my time.
This is about five years ago.
Okay.
Five and a half maybe. And there was also, it was a very new council. Three of us were brand new. We said, oh, well, if this is hurting development, then we'll agree to it. And you know, nobody was really asking. So it was probably a mistake to do.
I, I guess chain link's probably the easiest to remove and replace with something else as well.
Yeah, there's nothing preventing somebody once that new or that agricultural property goes under use from ripping that out. I would support it in that regard. Yeah. You know, still allows for it.
So we have a motion and a second. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show, we now have a need for chain link fence recovery. All right. So item number fourteen, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, amending the Syracuse City General Plan map for property located at approximately seventeen hundred South Banbury from commercial to high density residential, open for discussion.
So I received some information more recently that seems to not coincide with what's in the packet. And I respectfully, it would probably be good if we give staff some time to review that information as I didn't even have a chance to fully vet it. So I would think we should probably table this and see this item in a, in a work session with some more information from staff.
I too heard a, a new proposal and without time to put it in the packet, I think that we owe it to everyone to vet it in a, in another meeting. But so we have a motion table. Do I have a second?
Second.
No, that's a second. Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you want to talk more about it?
Yeah.
Okay, the item is tabled for tonight. Thank you. Proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, amending sections, and I'm not going to read all these. This is basically all the changes that we are proposing to make so that we will be considered a water wise landscaping city approved for the Weaver Basin Flip the Strip Program and other similar programs.
And to be clear, I think this is just good housekeeping to try and conserve water within the city. This, this will help us meet our goals that we've been trying to set forth and also helps people make good decisions on new development going forward. So.
Okay, any specific discussion with regard to the changes? We have had these in another meeting for public reference. These have been discussed detail by detail, but I don't think we need to do that again.
I, but I do agree with the public comment that was made. I do think we need to, in the, in the work session, we proposed we take out, any mention of vegetation in the rocks or in the, in the.
So that's still in there though.
It is still in there and, and I just want to make sure that I support that it's there. I know most of the councils in favor of taking it out, but I'm glad it's there again. I want to, I want to keep it there.
I, I don't, I don't think people should have to have vegetation in their yard. I don't think it should be a personal preference. If that's what they want in their yard, then they should be able to have it. I, we shouldn't tell them what they, how much vegetation they absolutely.
We don't tell them how much.
Thirty percent.
We just tell them there should be, well, in.
Amount percentage, thirty percent vegetation coverage required in the front yard. Thirty percent. That's, there should be discretion as to the homeowner.
But, but do we want all of these rock?
Grass is so popular, I don't think we'll have those. Well, people like soft stuff under their feet.
I'm okay with it as is, as it's written.
Thirty percent, huh?
I, I would settle for like fifteen.
It says limit yards, lawn and yards to thirty-five percent max is what it is.
It looks like the minimum.
Planning Commission is recommending that a minimum percentage of thirty percent.
Oh, no, I wasn't going to put that in. Yeah, no, I'm.
That's not what's in the.
Yeah, that's not what's in the actual recommendation. So the recommendation reads a plant vegetative planting, oh, it does say, this is plant vegetative covering of at least thirty percent of total per feet at the front. That yard is required remaining surface landscape, but it's not required to be vegetative.
But part of this, part of this was so that we could, we could get the incentive, right? So which part of, which part of this can we alter without losing our.
Well, to be fair, the agreement was that this works. So anything that we do differ, I, I mean, yeah, I think we could do differ, but anything that we do, we'd have to read.
Evaluate.
Mr. Steel.
Yeah, I think I might be able to add some clarity there. So I, I, I did dialogue directly with the water district and they, if we, they don't really care what, whether or not the city requires any vegetation at all. They just wanted us to take their big items where they want us to take the turf requirement out the front and they wanted us to limit the percentage maximum of turf. They don't care about the minimum per se. So we could go either way on this one.
So we could in theory take the minimum out.
Yeah, there, I mean, if you think about it, rocks are less water.
Yeah.
So if, if they're just concerning water, but we've debated it. Yeah, you could do whatever you want. I know. So as of right now.
Mine with that.
So here, here's my concern here is rocks, while they, they do take less water, but they also contribute to, and I forget what it's called, urban heating, urban heat.
That would have to be like clear.
Urban islanding.
Late, we would have to start, everybody in Syracuse would have to have that.
True, but it actually exacerbates an existing issue of the more heat you generate by not having vegetation, the worse the heat becomes and you get less water and it just becomes not unending cycle. So I'm actually okay, okay with the verbiage as is. I want to try and avoid a heat island because urban centers have been shown to get less rain over the years.
I, I say they shouldn't have to be required to have vegetation.
And to be clear, no one's going to go out with a measuring tape and say, it appears you are twenty-nine percent. So I think this is not something we're going to go out and send the inspector over to check, but we do want.
Good, that's the thing.
They could.
That is a good point.
But.
Good.
If you don't intend to enforce it, you probably shouldn't make the regulation.
But I do think it's good to encourage some vegetation because I think that it, it actually helps solve a problem we're having as well. Away from it.
Okay, so.
I think there's lots of science. I think the easiest way to do that then might be something more like yards void of any vegetation are prohibited.
I can live with that.
That way.
That's good.
That way it's not.
Cause that can't be a weed.
Five or.
Look, I grew a milkweed. I don't know. I mean, cause I don't know how you say.
Okay, we gotta have one.
That works.
I assume we have to limit the conversation to one for the record so that we can get a translation.
I, I'm okay passing it as is, but if you want to make a recommendation for a change, feel free.
So I would, I would move that we approve it as written with the inclusion of, the exclusion of the requirement for a percentage of lawn vegetation in the front yards with the idea that completely, I don't know how you say it, unvegetated yards are prohibited.
And so to be clear, you, we're, we're willing to allow paved front yards and just.
With a turnip bush.
You'd have to have a little hole in the middle with a tree sprouting from it. All right.
I, I don't like, I don't love it either. I mean, I'll be honest, I don't, but.
Okay, so you started to make a motion, but let's, let's get a motion that we can actually vote on. So what I heard was the motion that we would pass this as is accepting a requirement for minimum vegetation, but adding language that would state, we do not accept front yards void of vegetation.
I'm not okay with that.
Okay, well, just, that's what I heard is a motion.
So you would, you would prefer to keep it as is with thirty percent or is there a lower number?
No, I, I'm, I'm good as is. Like I said, I, I'm not going to go out and force it, but I, I do want there to be a suggestion that paving your front yard is not acceptable. And putting a single. True.
So, but if you're putting in an exception to where they, they can go out and enforce it if they choose to.
True.
So what? So why don't we find some common ground in between some vegetation, thirty percent and go.
I think that's what I'm agreeing.
Okay, so for the purpose of, of staying on track here with the rules, I heard a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, so I, we have a motion with a second. So that requires a vote. So on the motion as currently stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Sorry, I, I'll, 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 I'll go for it. Yeah.
Okay, so that motion passes three to one. Okay.
Making.
Item sixteen, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine.
Get what you get.
Amending the Syracuse City zoning map for property approximately two thousand West, RSR one oh three from A one to M X D, authorizing the execution of the development agreement. Hey, I'm gonna brief overview, Mr. Steel.
Okay, this is what we've been calling the hospital project. It's a very large project, a big investment in the city. It has been through the proper channels for approval. It's, it's been through planning commission, city council, public hearings. If I can update you from where we left off last time, there's been a lot of work involved. If you remember, there was some concern about creating a new zone, M X D H. So since then, we've worked with the applicant to create a, a development agreement similar to what we've done with other M X D developments. So that there's now a list of things that were problematic that they would still be able to move forward with the plan that's been presented in the packet. Some of the, I'd say the, the main item that needs to be discussed by this body is the city's contribution level for four fifty south.
Okay, so I have a list. First of all, let me state that it is the preference of the chair and that all development agreements be agreed to before we get to this point. But because there was a commitment that we would at least attempt to move forward by this date, we will at least address the open items at this point. But for future consideration, development agreement should be approved before the packet or in, in order to be voted on. So the open items that are out for discussion in the development agreement as currently constituted is number one, the overall use, first of all, M X D H is off the table as Noah stated. That's not an issue. It's not a thing. We don't offer it. We're not creating it. So everything that is going to be adjusted is going to be adjusted through the use of the development agreement or the current M X D. So the current zoning would be M X D just as we have it with the development agreement adjustments, development agreement adjustments that need to still be considered are overall uses of layout and layout of the project. So there are some things in the M X D that are not allowable that we have seen in the proposal. I think those would be that a hospital is not a conforming use, but we would put that in the development. Also, the future hospital building would be too large for our current agreement, but we would make an exception for the size of hospital. So I'm going to take these one at a time so that with, from the list that I got from staff for the current situation.
Yeah, and this is page three twenty-three of the packet, if anybody's wanting to fall through.
Is every, are, are we all okay with the changes to the overall layout and uses being adjusted in the development agreement as currently listed?
I support it. Yeah, you see, you're talking in addition to that, you're, the fact that there is a hospital isn't there. So we'd be adding that in. There, there's also some ideas with regards.
Not constructional elements to the.
Okay, not constructional.
That's next time.
This is the use. Do we feel comfortable with adding?
Yes.
Hospital one.
Use and the exceptions that would allow that use.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to say that that one we've, we've agreed to, that's, that's going forward. Next specific adjustment that's being requested is to the architectural requirements. This is specific to the development agreement pages six through eight. This deals with the fact that we require chamfered corners on multifamily buildings. And there are a few others. Can I ask you, Mr. Steel, to run through the adjustments that are being requested?
Sure, yeah.
This section.
Yeah, so if you look at their, their proposed plans, their elevations, they don't have a chamfered edge. The, the M X D ordinance requires that all of the doors face exterior on the first floor, that they face exterior, not to the shared breezeway. There's a, a theme of, of what we call the vertical mixed use theme that's required to be followed, which on, if you look at the other approved projects, that first floor has more of a storefront feel and it has some, a little bit more articulation. What they're proposing is more of a, you know, more of a standard apartment complex that you might, might see. It's still of high quality and but it's just not according to the, to the theme that we've made the other M X D projects follow.
Okay, so with that in mind, does anyone, this isn't, this is an exception. This is something that we would be granting this particular development based on the other things they bring to the table. How do people feel about these concessions?
So.
You don't have to go first. I just.
Um, so a lot of exceptions, right? And, and I think rightfully so. We're bringing forth a really good project. So because of that, I have some personal feelings towards one of the exceptions that I really want to focus on and it doesn't fall under, under this section.
Okay.
And the concessions are that we're okay with these ones because the other areas, I'm specifically referring to the, to the.
That'll be next.
So that's why I'm okay with these ones if we can get to a consensus on the other.
That's kind of where I am too. So some of these are usually pretty important. But I, I, I'll give these four other things.
Okay, so I'm going to.
I can work with that.
We've agreed that we will give these concessions because
Conditionally.
Conditionally agree that we're going to give these concessions in the current development agreement, which brings us to the next one. In light of the fact that we have given those exceptions, there is a request that city pay for four fifty north, a road that is required for the city's master plan. And according to our construction studies from in-house, this road is required due to this development. So now just to be noted, the developer is contesting that this is not necessary. According to our city standard, it is. So this would be page eleven, ten and eleven. I, I'm opening this for discussion. There are multiple ways that we can handle this part of the development agreement. One of which that's been suggested is that maybe the city would prefer this road be upgraded from our standard sixty foot to sixty-six foot and we should consider. And we should consider, because that would be on us with on-street parking requirement, that we would at least handle that.
I absolutely agree. I, as, as I look at this, um, I know that just back of the napkin mass, this project will probably, this road will probably see, on average, six thousand cars a day. Uh, just given the number of residents, unless they all go out to the state highway. Now, there is some, something for that. But I, I do think this road is extremely necessary and we would be unwise not to uh, require this to go in with a project. But I do realize that we are asking for an additional upsize, especially given, um, the high school next door. We know they're gonna park along the road, so it'd be crazy not to plan for that. And I don't think that's fair to ask of them to pay for that upsize. So, I think I can get behind the city covering that additional six feet, but the rest I do think is the responsibility of the project.
Others?
And I'm willing to make that based on, on the fact that, um, you know, we are.
We have done that everywhere.
Yeah, that, this is not anything new. Every project that's gone in has done this.
Yeah.
I support that statement.
Okay, we have support on this side?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable ask. Do we know what the cost would look like for that?
Have we?
Six feet?
Yeah, yeah, have we?
We do have an estimate, but it's pretty minimal.
So, yeah, the, the estimate that the developers provided for us using the same numbers, uh, it looks like, well, there's, there's, if you look at the land, the land value and the construction cost, you're about a hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars according to this. So, so roughly two hundred thousand dollars more if you go from a sixty to a sixty-six foot right of way.
Okay, so what I'm getting is consensus right now is that we would make the adjustment to the size of the road, but that would be the only adjustment that we would allow.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Item, now, now the next item we have to adjust for the development agreement is going to be related to exhibit B, and I'm gonna ask for clarification on this because it, in, it, it, uh, is related to the elevations for the commercial and the, uh, hospital uses. So can you clarify what the ask is?
Yeah, usually, usually anytime we have a commercial development, um, they'd have to meet our commercial standards. But they've requested to provide a picture of a similar project and as long as they build it similar to that, then, then we would be approving that theme. You know, they, they still need to come in with a site plan.
Okay.
So this would be two, you're saying?
No, so this is the question would be exhibit B, that's on page twenty-four.
That was twenty-two.
Uh, the note I have is twenty-four, but maybe it's. Anyway, the idea would be that we would allow for those adjustments if they match what has been shown.
So to clear, B one is residential use area renderings.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going off notes, Steph.
Yeah, there is a B two.
It'd be page twenty-two, sorry about that.
Page twenty-two, okay.
And twenty-two is, again, the project design standards for residential use.
Yeah, and what you see in the packet is a black and white line drawing.
Oh, so it is B two. Uh, twenty-two does outline B two.
If, if that's what you're asking about.
Basically so they look the same, right?
Well, so B two has inverted roofs or sloped roofs. Is that what we're?
That's what they're proposing. Um, sent, in the meantime, they've provided some pictures that they would add as well as the line drawings. Um, also, the, the hospital, uh, is, hasn't been designed yet either and, and so they're requesting to essentially be able to, to build a hospital of similar style as what you'd see. And so, we, we would be essentially giving them a lot of uh, free rein to design their hospital according to how they want to do it, which.
So how we've handled this in the past is we have said, okay, you provide us with a proposed standard, which they have, in this case, the, the drawing that we have. And then if it's significantly different, it has to come back to council to say, are we okay that this still meets the same standard? Because it would be considered an adjustment to the current development agreement. So I would propose that we go forward saying that what we have as the relative standard is the approval with the open opportunities, say, if you want to come back and design something different, then the council would just have to say, yes, we'll make an adjustment to the DA.
I guess my issue is, I'm having a hard time extrapolating a four-story building from a one-story slanted roof design.
Okay.
Four-story.
What?
If they're future.
Isn't the hospitals?
The hospital doesn't have an exhibit as far as.
I know, but they, they said the hospital will be something like this.
No, B two is what the commercial would look like.
Man, like just the office and.
The hospital, they don't have an exhibit. The office, they don't have an exhibit. They're just saying we'll, we'll build it similar to other.
So if it doesn't meet the current design standard, you would have to come back as a DA agreement adjustment?
If, if we could argue that it's not similar to other facilities, which would be hard to pinpoint. They don't even have an exact facility. They just say other facilities in the area. So the city is, uh, giving them a lot of leeway and a lot of trust because I'm assuming that because we, we really want the project and we want to give them the ability to do that. So, I mean, it, it is a big concession. So that, like, if you remember the, if you remember the diagram in the packet, there's essentially the hospital and the office and then there's the commercial and then there's the residential. So each the corresponding exhibits go along with those, those things. And so B two is just for that commercial portion. B one is just for the residential and then, you know, the hospital, we just don't have any renderings. They provided some real early on, they provided some, some kind of, uh, renderings, you know, bird's eye view kind of things of what they thought hospital might look like, but.
But we discussed this in the work session and one of the things that we talked about wasn't that they have their specific, one of the reasons we were giving them leeway of the hospital is because the hospital has specific requirements for aesthetics, correct?
Yeah, if you look on the list, the specific list in the development agreement, there's, there's items like the height, the length of the building,
Yeah.
the number of pop-outs and the amount of brick, rock and stone, all of that is specified in that list in the development agreement saying that the hospital would have a waiver to that.
Which I honestly think solves this because if we build anything to that standard, we're gonna be okay.
It's, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Product, honestly.
Okay, so, I am gonna conclude for, that our discussion led us to we will accept the overall uses and layout adjustment to the DA that was not specified. We will accept the architectural requirements within the housing section of the MXD that are being requested. The concession that we will offer on the road will be to upsize from sixty to sixty-six foot. But that would be the limit of our, uh, concession on that and that the exhibit B two, if I'm correct, uh, concession would be to standards of elevations which we think are taken care of with the architectural review. So based on that, can I get a motion to accept the proposed zone change with those changes to the development agreement?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Further discussion?
And Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could just jump in real quick, since this is gonna require some amending. So, so if, it seems like you've agreed to everything that's in the, the agreement that we sent over earlier today. Um, with the exception of, um, five point nine and six point four related to system improvements, um, and project improvements. And so that, the direction you'd be giving me would be to, to edit the language to reflect the, the decision that, that, uh, that we would pay for upsizing and that, that the city's position is that sixty feet is, is required of the project.
Required, because that's required of everybody when it's part of our master plan.
Just wanted to make sure I got that direction. Thank you.
Okay, so that's our clarification at this time. Any further discussion? Hey, did I get a second on that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, so I am going to say at this point, the rezone has been approved according to the latest development agreement. Now, the applicant has not formally accepted this DA, which we are not going to do in the future. We're going to make sure that that's accepted ahead of time. Paul is now in your court. You can run with this and build according to what we just approved. I know there was been some discussion about should somebody else pay for this road? The only tools that we need to do that will take time. So any further discussion means that this gets voided on your side and we start down the process of possibly creating a CRA. Those take months. So it's up to you. All right, I'm moving this on. Proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, amending the Syracuse City zoning map for property approximately three hundred west uh, or south and one, or fifteen fifty west for general commercial to mixed-use MXD. Noah, would you preface where we're at?
Okay. Um, general commercial to MXD. Uh, if, if you remember, we've previously discussed this topic. This is in relationship to the hotel and the Monterey West project that we've previously approved. This, um, is where the hotel currently lies. They want to move the hotel and put two more apartment buildings there. That's what this item, there's two other, uh, corresponding agenda items, one for the zoning of where the hotel will go and one for the amendment of the development agreement that would make all this possible. So,
Okay, so they're connected.
It's a little bit interconnected. Yes, um, and, and I don't know if Paul wants to weigh in or whether or not it can just be one motion. But it, so.
Yeah, advice for council?
Um, it would be I think it would make a lot of sense to, to, to hear all three of these items, um, consider them all and then have one motion, uh, that addresses all of them. Because you wouldn't want to have like mixed results. So it, it makes a lot of sense, I think, to have all of them in one big motion.
Okay, so let me amend that we are in a position where we are, or we are talking about item seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, or no, yes, and nineteen. But primarily seventeen and eighteen in conjunction with one another that requires the changing of the mixed use for the purpose of relocating the commercial component to the other side at twenty-one fifty west, three fifty south.
Let me point out what, some of the things that we've updated since last time. Specifically with the development agreement, uh, I crossed out some items on the staff report. Um, if you remember, he was requesting to remove the minimum size of thirty thousand. I heard last time, no, we want to keep that, we want to leave that in there. They were also, there's some, um, issues with the parking that he, twenty-two stalls short. We also said no to that and that the new development agreement now says that he's either gotta move things around to accommodate onsite or he can provide a, a shared parking agreement with, with an adjacent landowner. And then we talked about architectural standards and we also said, no, we want you to meet our commercial standards for architecture. And then as far as the list of amenities, because they're getting rid of a, an exhibit that previously showed what the hotel looked like. Uh, now they're listing out the specific amenities for the hotel. Um, so those, those are the major changes. The, the zone changes, the, the zoning map boundaries are still the same. So the, on the corner of one ninety-three and two thousand, that's still where they want to put the hotel. Um, and then, of course, like I said already, where the hotel was, they want to put those two more apartment buildings there. So wrapped up all three of those separate things. Um, I think you can do one motion unless we have more questions.
This is one motion, open for discussion on how to handle this issue.
Um, I'm gonna start by saying, I think I addressed this, uh, any, uh, session. So, thank you for arguing what the citizens' biggest complaint was, was having the hotel by the school, um, and moving it. Because of that, I know they're anti-more apartments, but I also understand that we've got to give to get uh, in that aspect. Parking, however, like we've all discussed, we've all lived in apartments, is a problem, I feel like. Because that can become a, a area of contention between neighbors. Gentlemen, thoughts?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into, we've had other projects recently that ended up with a parking issue. I just don't want to introduce that to start before we even get this thing off the ground. So, anything we can do to allay those ahead of time, obviously, would be in our best interest. Um, I don't know that, so the solution right now is, what, can you reiterate what the solution for that was? It would either require a.
Yeah, I said.
Parking.
It would be with the right sitter next door, I'm assuming.
There's options. Option one, he either, and I don't want to speak for the developer, if you can state it, but option one, he either accommodates it onsite, so he makes some changes. He takes out units, he maybe reduces open space and puts it there. Or he can find maybe to the north where Russen is or the site next to that.
Yeah.
So he could, he could get an agreement to park over there. He's short twenty-two stalls.
What I don't want to do is knowingly be short and have people start to use schools parked across the street. That will become
That would happen.
A very hostile issue between neighbors. And so we do not have enough parking. It usually goes the other way, where the school infringes on the housing. But if the housing is already short, then we're gonna probably have the reverse.
That's honestly my only holdup is the parking. I feel like parking is a huge issue in parking complexes. And it's just overlooked so often that we just can't do that.
Okay, so.
I don't know how we would fix that. I guess that would be something the developer.
We would have to require.
So in the past.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
Adequate parking is available or you have some sort of a frame there.
Yeah, they, that's what the agreement says.
Yeah, it says, it says he has to work it out.
You have to work it out, yes, we're not. So I don't think there's any more we need to say about it. It's just it would be required to have the adequate parking.
And, and we're still, and then moving on to the hotel. So yes, I agree with that. On the hotel, we are requiring all of the same guidelines that were associated with the hotel in its previous location be required for its updated location, correct? There's no, there's no downs, downscaling of the apartment or the hotel in the new location.
It would say thirty thousand square feet, internal hallway, meets our commercial standards, has the list of amenities.
Okay.
On the area that's been rezoned. What was that?
Same.
Same amenities. Yeah, I believe it specifically lists out pool, spa, breakfast.
Says the same thing.
Yep.
Like communal.
So, any further discussion on that?
Nope, that's fine with me.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
Who wants to try? So are we seeing all, or are we making the motion on all three?
We're making the motion on all three. Hey, well.
Or do we want to hear the rest of, I mean, was there anything?
We're making the motion on, um, on at least, at least seventeen and eighteen, meaning that we will reconfigure the mixed use to allow for apartments in place of the commercial that is being authorized on the other side.
With these guidelines.
With the.
Yeah, I can try. So I move that we approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two, ten, eleven, twenty-two, twenty-two, eleven and authorize the mayor to execute the development agreement for the hotel in Monterey West project.
I second.
I don't think it's.
Okay, any further discussion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Item number twenty, ordinance, uh, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, amending chapter ten dash ninety-two of the Syracuse municipal code, mixed-use development zone. It would be the changes that we've been discussing for some time. Unless anybody has some new stuff to bring forward, it would be as written in the packet.
So one thing that we talked about in our last meeting that did not make it in here, um, they updated the setback from eighty-five to a hundred feet.
Yeah.
I would like to move it back to the eighty-five. We had a lot of thought that went into that and, and I actually prefer it at the.
Yeah, I kind of thought that's where we ended up at too last time was to leave it as.
Well, what I don't want to do is just have giant unusable pieces of land next to buildings.
I'm, I may have misheard.
So my understanding was when we were upgrading from was that we were taking the exist, what we thought of. Was that we were taking the exist, what we thought of previously was the existing standard of what a full width of a road could be.
Yeah.
Now, what we were adding to it was the actual setback of what a yard would be next to that.
I thought a yard is actually twenty feet.
Example for that.
Yeah, so twenty, sixty, twenty, a hundred.
That means that we're, okay, so that's included in your saying.
No, I'm, well, from what I thought I heard you guys say.
Twenty sixty.
Was, you have a twenty-foot setback, then a road, then another twenty-foot setback. That's the hundred.
So I, I think it's excessive.
I have a question with an example, actually. So going down three thousand, head south from Annalise. Right there with the fire department and uh church. If that road was to be wider. Where's the space coming? So and with these setbacks on here that we're talking about now, I think that addresses the road to be wider.
No, because this is behind.
This is a rear setback though.
That's, so, so this is between a house behind it and the back of the apartment. I, I hope we're not putting a road.
And, and I think confusion's came in that we threw that number from based on the width of the road.
Yeah.
Yes.
There, there isn't an actual base on the. Yeah. So that's where the number one hundred came from. You're saying it's still too much, but at least it is based on an actual.
Yeah.
So other thoughts is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it as is on the eighty-five feet.
Okay, so that's two. Do you want, do you want to make a motion that we make, that we approve these changes?
What are your thoughts, Paul?
Uh I, I think when you're talking about the size of these.
Three-story units.
Three-story, I, I really think it's not going to make a significant difference between eighty-five and a hundred.
Great.
I would agree.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept this? New ordinance with that one adjustment going back to the eighty-five.
Not yet, just.
You got one more?
I got one more. So uh we have required commercial square feet to maximum height ratios. I noticed they only adjusted the three-story maximum of forty feet to fifty-six. I guess I'd like to hear your thoughts on adjusting two-story maximums as well to somewhere in the middle. Because right now it goes twelve, twelve, twenty-four, fifty-six is huge jump. I'd actually like to, to see it a little more gradual of a slope there and uh put. Uh the two-story in the middle of the two, so it's at least linear.
So it requires more commercial for a two-story development versus, is that what you're?
Yeah.
So I think, I think in uh, in theory, it makes a lot of sense to do that. I mean, it, it sounds a little unusual to have such a big jump. Um I'm, I'm wondering in practice if, if folks are going to really push for a, a two-story building.
To get an extra commercial?
Yeah, we're just not really seeing anything that's, I mean, I guess townhomes, but.
I guess, I remember the thought process is we were trying to incentivize people to build low, you know, not such huge tall. Structures and so. I think in theory it probably makes some sense, but we've only seen the three stories.
Yeah.
I mean.
I'm okay with the developments.
My thought here is, I thought the point of the MXD zone was trying to squeeze a little bit more commercial out of residential.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And so with that thought, I'd actually recommend that it be pushed to something. And I, I can't do math in, in public because I don't want to. But somewhere between twelve and fifty-six, I, I'd like to hit the middle on the two-story. Because our whole goal here is to try and get that extra commercial. And we've seen that uh people are amenable to this. We, we have sixty, forty developments coming in and it's sixty on the, on the commercial side. And so I don't see a reason to undersell the MXD zone.
You could just drop the, the rungs down one level. So what used to be thirty-six could drop to the two-story and the twenty-four could drop to the one-story. Might be an easy fix.
I actually, um, I like that. So do a, a twenty-four, thirty-six and a fifty-six. That's for it.
I don't want to make it too simple, but.
Hey, uh, did you have anything else, Seth? Looked like you were ready.
I just wanted to ask, so on page four oh five in the packet, that's the list we're going off of. Is that correct?
Yep, I'm good.
What else? Jordan, make your motion.
Okay, then I move, we approve uh ordinance, this is twenty-two dash twelve. With the adjustment of the distance required, uh well, leaving at eighty-five, so there's no adjustment there, never mind. Uh with the adjustment of the required commercial space. Uh for one story at twenty-four, two-story at thirty-six and three-story as identified at fifty-six.
I second.
Yeah, we would not be changing it to a hundred.
Okay, motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Okay, uh item twenty-one, ordinance twenty twenty, or it, this should be twenty dash twenty-two, not twenty-two oh two. Um so I'm going to change that. This is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. Adopting a process for voluntary pre-application consultations with the city council.
I like this.
This is just a voluntary option for those who feel they would like a general consult with the council members. That it would be authorized us to do it with everyone.
And we, we, people have the ability to do this now. But this just formalizes the process.
They have the ability to do this.
Sort of.
Because I remember a, a great uh proposal about a storybook park that was lovely and they just came in and gave us an idea.
Yeah.
And it would be that, that type of a thing.
Yeah.
This is just formalizing the process for us, so.
You know, because if you want to be consistent, then you should have.
Yep, I'm good with that.
People have done this. It's just now we're making a s- con- consistent set of how it's done.
Okay, then in that case, I move.
Last time we discussed whether there would be a fee associated. I don't see anything, we just decided.
Okay.
Or, or we need one because that's.
I don't, I don't think so. That's the whole point.
I don't vote against it anyway, so I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, I think that's the whole point is to.
Don't care. It's not, honestly, I've just really tried to be codified.
Uh motion, we accept ordinance twenty-two zero two dash thirteen.
Twenty dash twenty or twenty twenty-two dash.
It's right here, it says, oh.
It's misnumbered, I just said that.
Oh, apologies. Um what she said.
I have a second.
My second.
Okay, move, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Oh, okay, I thought you said.
Oh, no, nay.
You can only be one.
That was Paul.
All right. Okay, that's fine. Uh so that motion passes. I am going to now, uh before we go into the end of our meeting. Put us in recess so that we can consider um our one uh special redevelopment item. And then we can come back to this meeting to adjourn. So I put us in recess and immediately call to order. A meeting of the redevelopment agency. Um do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I move. Second.
Any opposed? Okay, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, so going forward, consideration of and or action regarding proposed sale of city-owned land. Located at approximately twenty sixty-eight west nineteen hundred south. This would be the land that the city owns in the middle of the city center Walmart site. Unless we, we, we've talked about this previously, unless there's any more discussion, I'll take a motion that we can take this action.
Uh Mr. Mayor, I propose that we uh. Carry forward the sale or move forward with the sale of the city-owned uh land located approximately twenty sixty-eight west nineteen hundred south.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, just as a report to the public, this uh, someone came forward with a proposal that the city likes. And now it's official, we will go forward with selling the land to that business group who plans to develop a new restaurant in our city. So that's now public and can be discussed.
I, I, I hear it, it was already said during uh planning commission on the record, so it's already out there.
Was it?
In the contract.
So zupas will be coming to city center and we're really. Okay, so that's now official and out, out of. I'm adjourning us from the RDA meeting and going back into our.
Need a motion to adjourn from that meeting?
Not from that meeting. Oh, we do? Okay.
Second.
Any of, want to oppose to adjourn?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we adjourned from that meeting. We are back into, I'm recalling us to the public meeting. Where we will now open it up to public comment for anyone who would like to discuss the items that we've discussed tonight.
Council members, my name's Logan Johnson with Wright Development Group. Uh it's good to solve the mystery of where our zupas in West Point went. And uh we're not disappointed it's coming to Syracuse, so that's great to hear. We were shopping them in West Point and uh it's good to see Syracuse get a victory there, so. Um I also wanted to comment real quick, Mayor, with this new tool you've developed, I'd like to take a stab at an informal approach to that right now. We have some neighbors here who we have some of their property under contract. And we're looking at coming in with a rezone on some property that would be south of the proposed four fifty street. That you just discussed with the hotel, but across two thousand. So we've locked up a lot of property in that area. We'd like to come in with a rezone of a PRD with property south of that road. And we'd like to propose coming in at twelve units an acre. Um and, and to make that, that street also sixty-six feet wide, which would follow the.
Caution you here that.
Yeah.
We, this is public comment, so we cannot respond to you at this point.
That's fair.
Based on this. So if everything that you're saying is going to have to be presented in a meeting that is open for discussion.
That's fair. Okay, well, I thought it was worth a shot. You guys seemed so excited about this new tool.
I, I mean, really, we're going to make it easy, but.
Yeah.
We, we do have, if we're going to have comments, it has to be uh announced to the public that we're going to discuss.
Okay, that's fair. Great. Well, I may or may not be reaching out to you guys in that manner and in all kinds of creative ways as well, so thank you.
Looking forward to talking with you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Uh I'm now going to go down, we'll start with Paul or council announcements. Of anything that's new and needs to be brought to the attention of the council.
I don't have any announcements.
Okay, Seth?
Um a lot going on with CTC. Um there'll be uh some emails coming out to you guys to update you on um some things that are happening. Um I know, Mayor, are we going to have a discussion about the magnets?
Yes.
Coming up, okay, so we don't need to.
That'll be on the next work session.
Okay, just, just a teaser, there's some interest, well, there's some, a, a request from CTC to put some magnets on some city-owned vehicles. For uh informing citizens and, and youth about the dangers of vaping. So uh it's a campaign they're doing and, and we'll discuss it more. Um and then um also, Mayor, are, are we okay to, did we decide we're going to have an item on youth council?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll bring an update to you guys on youth council and some direction we're going next meeting.
Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Jordan?
Uh so we had our um meeting for the Waste Management District. I'll be putting together a report to send you guys. Need to say, I, I do think we, there's a few things we should probably look at uh with regards to um the life cycle of, of our landfill. And so I'll put that in the report and we can talk more about it at a future date. Teaser.
Teaser. So not a teaser, the museum is having their museum library or their museum birthday party on Saturday. Everybody go, it's the twentieth, so they're coming to hats off thing, we're cool hat. Uh mosquito baiting is out loud and proud, you probably can run around. So if you have any, citizens have anywhere that you need extra spray, you can call and they'd be happy to set you up.
Okay. So uh the sewer district, oh, this is the announcement. Uh the sewer district held interviews and I was part of the interview committee to replace the plant manager. Which will be voted on in Thursday's meeting. So that announcement will be forthcoming. The current plant manager has announced that he will be retiring the end of June after twenty-five years of service. So we have to appreciate that, thanks to the board, remember it's been longer. Um so. With regard to sewer plant, so I've made arrangements with the Vector Truck Company to come up on Friday. Uh and do a demonstration on what its capabilities are. He's available all day, it probably won't take more than an hour or two. So I thought I would open it up for discussion if there's a preferred time this Friday. He's booked out the day to show us this amazing tool. And we would meet at Public Works where they have facilities that we can do a lot of demonstration tests.
My, my preference is after twelve.
Okay, any other?
I, I'd actually like to do it, can you do it at twelve? Because then that, that, that gets us back so we can do elementary school pickups.
That's a good actually time.
Uh yeah, I could try. I don't have a preference, I've got a pretty full day. I, I won't make it that day.
Okay, well, I, then we will set the time at twelve, Robert?
Twelve fifteen, is that better?
Twelve fifteen?
Yeah, that'd be good.
I can work.
Can you reach out to Jeremy and say that we would start uh twelve fifteen-ish? And uh we'll meet at Public Works or look, it's an expensive piece of machinery, but it, it's. If you've seen what needs to be done in a sewer, you just cannot function without one of these tools.
Do we get to press the buttons?
I don't want to see what has to be done in a sewer.
Okay, well.
We just want to press the buttons.
I don't know if certain, you know, it's his truck. I can't promise that you can push it. That's right. Uh I mean, really, it's, it's designing, we have trained personnel in the city to do this. So I'm not going to make any promises that anyone but them gets to push. Friday. This Friday. Okay, thank you all for counsel for your interest in that. Uh also, the Arts Council is uh. Got their musical under full rehearsal. They'll be doing Shrek musical this summer, uh looking forward to that. So put that on your calendars. I will take a motion to adjourn unless, Brody, do you have anything you would need to add to our meeting? We do not have a closed session tonight. We are going to get out before eight if someone would make that motion.
I still move, we adjourn.
Or I'm going to call those a first, second and third, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are done, folks, thank you.
How do we do that that fast?
Well.